Different practice than we've done before. So today, we'll be doing some new breath practices. And we're going to do a practice to really allow ourselves to let go, to let go of stagnant energy, to let go of what we're holding on to. And only when we start to let go can we then access some space, a little bit of stillness, and then we can allow newness to arise in our lives. So it'll be a nice practice. Just make sure you've got a nice tall spine. So you're sitting on something, so your hips are higher than your knees. Allow the spine to be nice and tall. You can be on a chair or something, but make sure that you're sitting on the edge of it. So you allow that nice, long spine. We're going to transition again into japa at the end of the practice. And we'll be using a beautiful mantra invoking love, heart space. I'll be doing 108 rounds today because it's a shorter mantra. I'll be guiding through with the marla beans. If you have marla beans, you're welcome to use them. But if not, just join in and drop into the heart space. It's a beautiful practice invoking love mantra this week. So let's just take a moment here to roll our shoulders up towards our ears and then drop them back down. Bring your shoulders up towards your ears and drop them back down. And one last time, let's bring the shoulders up towards the ears and then slowly drop them back down. Shoulder blades towards each other, the heart radiating forward. Next, neutral, slightly tuck the chin and close down the eyes. And just start to take a moment to tune into the breath. See how you've risen today, how you're feeling. You might feel energetic, you might feel lethargic. Let's just observe. And start to bring the breath in and out through the nose. As we bring our palms together, namaskaramudra. Palms facing each other, thumbs gently pushing against the breastbone, breastbone gently pushing back. As we begin our practice with one round of om, we'll take a clearing breath in through the nose and out through the mouth. And we'll begin inhale. Feeling the vibration of om at the heart space. Taking a moment here, keeping our eyes closed, dropping inwards to set our intention for our practice today. To let go and create space for the new to unfold. Access stillness. Placing your left hand on your chest and dropping the right hand down onto the belly. And let's start lengthening our breath, breathing in and out through the nose. Inhaling deep into the belly, feeling the belly rise on inhalation. And as we exhale, feel the belly soften, the navel drops back towards the spine. Sending our breath down deep into our belly with our inhale through our nose. And then exhaling from the belly, navel drops towards the spine. Breathing consciously with awareness, intentionally. Breathing deep into the belly. And exhaling, making it long and slow, not rushing the breath. Now breathing deep into the belly. Breathe a little bit more air into the rib cage, ribs expanding. Exhaling, ribs contracting, and the belly softens. Breathing deep into the belly, into the rib cage. And then allowing that to drop, ribs contract and the belly softens. Breathing deep into the belly, a bit more into the rib cage, and a bit more up into the chest, all the way up to the collarbones. And then exhaling from the chest, the ribs and the belly. Few more rounds here, breathing fluidly from the belly into the ribs, all the way to the chest, creating a full breath. And when you exhale, allowing that to release from the chest, the ribs and the belly. Moving fluidly through that full yogic breath. Where is the breath traveling along the spine? Utilizing the full capacity of our breath. Making that three-part breath into a fluid, full breath, full inhalation, full exhalation. Last breath like this. And letting it go. Keep the eyes closed, dropping your hands down, resting on your knees. Throw our shoulders up one more time, drop them back down, lengthen that spine, tuck that chin. We move into a cleansing and detoxifying breath. With this practice, we're going to inhale through the nose in one breath, being aware to fill up the belly and move slowly with your inhalation. And when we exhale, we're going to exhale in seven portions through the nose to create one full exhalation. And you'll feel gentle pumps of the navel towards the spine as we exhale through the nose in those seven parts. I'll guide you through the first few rounds. Inhale through the nose, long and slow, filling up the belly. Then exhale through the nose in seven portions. Letting it all go, and the last breath, nothing in between. Inhale again. Filling up the belly, slow and fluid. Exhale through the nose in seven portions. Inhaling through the nose. Exhaling seven portions. As you're exhaling, that gentle pump of the navel coming towards the spine. It just happens naturally with the exhalations. Continue in your own rhythm. Inhaling for one long, fluid breath and exhaling through the nose in seven portions. Releasing stress, activating the navel intelligence. When we activate the navel intelligence, it directly correlates with the brain. The gut and the brain connected creates more clarity and more focus in the brain. As we clear out anything stagnant, any heavy energy, leaving any stress. Building heat at the navel center, the agni, the fire of transformation. Clearing any blockages with each exhale. Letting go each time. Filling up with fresh prana on the inhale. And as you exhale, letting go of what no longer serves you, the old, that which is holding you back with each exhale. Letting go, releasing. Letting go of that tight grip that we hold on to, things that we know pre-conditioned, ideas, pre-conditioned ways of thinking. See if you can just release a little bit more. Few more rounds here. Complete one final round of inhalation. And seven exhalations. And then let it go. Regulate the breath. Feel the subtle sensations in the body. You might feel a lightness around that space between the eyebrows. As I said, the gut and the brain related, healthy guts, healthy brain. When we shift energy around our navel center, it shoots energy rising up along the spine and it settles in this area between the eyebrows, near that agya chakra. The energy rises up to there, allows clarity, focus. We start to let go of that old stagnant energy and allow this newness to arise. See what unfolds, creating that space for it to arise. Regulating the breath in and out through the nose. As we move into a practice to let go a little bit more and bring some lightness as well. In this practice, we're going to lift our shoulders and we inhale through the nose. And as we exhale through the nose, we drop the shoulders. We're really releasing, letting go. So in nose, raise the shoulders, out nose, drop the shoulders. And we're going to start to pick up the pace here. And we're going to move. Really bring some lightness. You might want to sway side to side as you're dropping the shoulders. You might want to feel like you're bouncing. In nose, out mouth. And just release everything, let it go. Feel a little bit playful, move side to side. Let the body be soft, but that breath is strong. This really soothes the nervous system. You know, a strong practice, but take it lightly. Enjoy the play, just feel like you're moving lightly, letting stuff go, releasing. Rapid shrugs of the shoulders, moving with the breath. Twenty more seconds here. Let's go for another 10 seconds. Stay light, stay loose, let it go. Stay with it a little bit more, keep going. See if you can drop those shoulders, let it go with the breath. And inhale, bring the shoulders up. Exhale, release. Regulate the breath here, you might feel a little bit lightheaded. Even though the body's moving loosely, the breath is strong. Really moving energetically there with the breath. Letting go, releasing. Feel everything dropping away from the shoulders, melting away. Letting go of any heaviness, heavy feelings. Allow it to all drop away. Creating space, accessing stillness. It's not taking our life, let's not take things too serious. Allowing your worries to drop away. Enjoy the play, we call that the leela, play of life. When we create space, we access a bit of stillness. And then we can see where our intuition guides us. See what arises. Able to listen. As we move with our breath, in these four parts of breath, we're going to inhale through the nose as we draw our hands up along our thighs towards our waist. Exhale through the nose again. Using the nose again, inhaling nose. And on the fourth breath, exhale through the mouth. Inhale nose. Bring the hands up. Exhale nose. Inhale nose. And on the fourth breath, exhale mouth. Slow exhale through the mouth, letting go. Inhaling nose. Exhaling nose. Inhaling nose. And letting it out through the mouth. In nose. Out nose. In nose. Out mouth. Continue on. Allow the breath to take you there. Letting go of the busy mind. Letting go of thoughts. Accessing stillness. Stew in the breath. Breathing in three times through the nose. And fourth breath, letting go through the mouth. Few more rounds here. Allowing the breath. Let you release and let go. One final round. Let it out in that last sigh out. And coming to stillness. Regulating the breath. Locating that space, that stillness. Your spirit is always sending messages. Always whispering messages of love to you, guidance to you. In order to be able to listen, you have to be silent within yourself. If you are too busy listening to your own thoughts, you are not silent and then you cannot hear. Moving in some big circles, goofy grinds. Big rotations slowly rounding into your body. Letting the breath just flow with the movement. See what arises. Changing direction, big circles in the other direction. Rounding into your body. And then gently coming to stillness. Eyes closed. Sitting in that space, in that stillness. Coming back to our intention to let go. Let go of that tight grasp. That tight hold on to the known. Sometimes holding on to things that we know that are no longer serving us, that we need to let go of. We hold on tightly. Fear of the unknown. What if we just let go and release? Allow some space. Access stillness. Allow the new to arise. See what unfolds. As we drop into our mantra, invoking love at the heart. Aham Prima. I am love. Love of the great mystery. Inviting love into all aspects of your life. Self-love, love for all beings. Placing the left hand on the heart, right hand on top. I'll guide us through the mantra of Aham Prima. Taking a moment to invoke these qualities in the heart. Loving kindness, compassion. Self-love, love for all beings. And drop into the mantra out loud, in a whisper or in silence as we begin. Aham Prima. 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 I am love. Allowing these qualities of joy, love, kindness and compassion to come to their full expression within. Love for self, love for all beings. Taking these qualities into our day and the week ahead. Slowly bringing your hands to the heart in Namaskar Mudra. May you feel a release, a feeling of letting go of lightness. Allowing space and stillness for the new to arise within. Namaste, everybody. Thank you for sharing this practice with me. Have a beautiful day ahead.